Order the June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three work session for the Foxfire Village Council. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Don Boydow. And I will be acting as mayor in this meeting. Does anyone have anything to add to the agenda? Any items?
No, I'll cover the Tesla when I do well site number ten, so I don't need a separate line item.
Okay, I have one item I need to add to the agenda, which is salary schedule for employees. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm glad to have to leave you that way, they can check my make rate and supply rate.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda modified?
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so let's start with you with your well site update.
Yeah, okay, so this is well site number ten. You may recall on the last session that I had let you know that it went down. And it was removed by Underwood. And they, first of all, I want to say they responded very quickly, removed for evaluation, and the pump is bad. That's the bad news. The good news is, is that it's still covered under warranty. So they're, it's already, they already have the new pump and are going to be putting it in in the next two days. Will be in in the ground, so really good news that it was still under warranty and we didn't have to pay for that.
Did they just replace that one? We have, which well, which well was that that happened?
I think that was eleven.
Okay.
That was eleven, that was the back, and that was the backflow preventer.
Okay.
When it's down, does it affect any households?
Uh, no, as a matter of fact, which we've seen over the past, and I mentioned to the, to everybody that we are, you know, knock on wood, we do not see that much of an uptick when we have a well that goes down. We are just now starting to get numbers to be able to make assessments. But we, because we didn't have any baseline numbers from previous years, we're only going based upon what we've got here within the last six months since Jesse got started.
Okay.
When, when eleven went down, we, we, that was really a good benchmark for us to see what happens when one goes down and, and how much is that affecting our other wells? And, and minimal effect, I mean, there was a, there was an increase from the other wells, but nothing that stressed out the system at all, so that was really good news. Now, the difference now, of course, is that we're into the summer.
Yeah.
We went from an average consumption of one point two million gallons during the winter to three point two million gallon just for the summer. But I, you know, I, I had the same reaction, but that's probably normal. Because we don't have any baseline numbers to reference backwards, we freak out. Well, we do now, so next year we'll know to expect a, you know, a two million dollar or two million dollar, two million gallon increase as we begin the summer, and we won't freak out then unless the numbers are, you know, kind of crazy. So, so to answer your question, uh, no, no effect that is a problem for the village whatsoever. We were definitely covering it with the other, other wells. Uh, and then I just wanted to, I got the news today, for those that have not been down the road on Hoffman, they, Underwood has their equipment on the Sackman Road property, and I might keep their fingers crossed that they're able to bring in a strong well for us over the next couple of days. So they're setting up now, they should start drilling probably tomorrow or the next day. We should get the flow rate within those time periods, probably by two to three days. Uh, the, which obviously that, that first number is going to be very important to us to see where that's at. Uh, and then the next step of the process is to have a radiological review. Those results are set up and those are going to take a little bit longer. But first things first is we need to bring in a good, strong well, and that's really what we're hoping to find out next.
What is it?
Uh, something with the, um, the soil and the, the, because they're going to take soil samples all the way down. And then they send, I don't know exactly how they do it, they parse it out, but they send those up for somebody to make sure there's no.
Contaminants.
Contaminants.
Oh, okay.
So that's, 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 that's my update.
I just wanted to say one thing, uh, that piece that you put together that was on the website about people utilizing water and went, very, very nice.
Oh, thanks.
Very good.
Somebody brought that up to my attention, I can't remember.
At the last meeting.
I sent you an email, right?
And, and that as well, yes.
Yeah, but someone, the two folks that came up and said, um, you know, that was very well worded.
I had a little, had a little attachment to it that talked about, like, what happens if you let a faucet drip.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My editor, Lisa, she cut that out, I don't know.
But you know what, we all were, you gave us that way that went when we had the, um, the water tower and.
Oh, yeah, when they were doing the.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I had no idea that even just a water drip would create.
Yeah.
But thank you for doing that.
Yeah, you bet. Probably have to do another one here in another month or so, just to remind me.
I had, I had mentioned to you, and I don't know if anyone thinks it's a good idea, but I had mentioned to Gary that maybe we could, if you do another one of those updates, we could maybe talk about a small blurb about drought resistant plants and gardens. And that, you know, if you want to plant a garden, there's some beautiful drought resistant flowers and shrubs that would be, you know, helpful, because you don't have to water them all the time.
And that's, when we got here, we zero escaped our property for that exact reason, so that we wouldn't have to be watering the grass and things like that. So that's a great idea, just talk about alternatives.
And let people do their own research if they want, you know, but at least put the thought in their head that, you know, there's some beautiful things that are drought resistant.
Okay, good idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually, uh, ask, talk with Lisa. I'm gonna take some videos of them doing the well and try to get that on our website. I think people will probably appreciate that. Okay, that's all I have.
Next up is, um, council member Nelson.
Okay, the fire department, uh, we do have a signed contract, they've got their contract in hand and we have it also, so that's a done deal for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the police side, um, when South Shamrock was closed, the residents there had to go out the Hoffman Gate. And it was brought to our attention that at the evening hours, when that gate is open, the support posts are black and they're hard to see. So we went ahead and painted the post yellow, so now that they can see it.
That's good.
Another thing is, we put new lights in the police department in the outside foyer because the old ones were really ratty, so they got new lights there, so that, that looks real nice. Uh, the next thing is, we have a, an issue with one resident speeding on Woodland Circle. Uh, anyway, I just got the updated June one through June twenty-ninth, uh, data of the electronic speed machine.
That's on Woodland Circle?
That's on Woodland Circle. Right next to where the hill goes, drops off down in the valley. There were seven thousand eight hundred and four inbound vehicles. And from fifteen to thirty miles an hour, it was ninety-seven point two-two percent. So the far majority was, would sit in the tolerance. Uh, two and a half percent were, or a hundred and eighty-three vehicles were going thirty-one to thirty-six. And there were fourteen vehicles that went between thirty-seven and forty-five, which is point zero two percent.
Don, Don, sorry, remind me, that area where that's set up, that's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit there?
Yes.
It's twenty-five, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
And they can't, they won't ticket unless it's over thirty, thirty-one or more, because they, they can't go do thirty. They can't pick them up at twenty-nine.
Oh, not.
Ten miles per hour.
So five plus, they have to be at least five or six miles over the speed limit.
Probably thirty-one miles an hour before they get ticketed.
Ah, but I thought so.
And most, most police departments are at that same, because if they go to court, they just get thrown out anyway.
Right. So according to this data, uh, we don't really have a major issue of speeding. And you got fourteen people going between thirty-seven and forty-five, they could all be going thirty-eight miles an hour.
Right, out of seven thousand cars.
Out of seven thousand eight hundred, or seven thousand eighty-four cars.
Wow, yeah.
So that's pretty darn good, I think.
I do too.
Now, that's incoming vehicles, we don't have the outgoing sign up, maybe we should take that sign and put for the outgoing also. So we get that data.
We could.
Yeah.
There's no reason why we wouldn't.
And I think that would be helpful based on the residents', uh, sensitivity to that area, to have both of those numbers. I think that would be helpful.
So I'm gonna have the police switch that over, maybe starting on July one and do the thirty days, we compare it back and forth.
Good idea.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, I'm gonna go and try to talk to the neighbors close to that site and get their opinions about remedies, if we need to do anything, I don't think we do, but. It was brought up, put a four-way stop sign in there. Well, first of all, the DOT doesn't allow putting four-way stops in for controlling speed, it's strictly only for safety matters. Another thing is, speed bumps. When you put speed bumps, it is going to be more noise, a lot more noise than what.
That could be a problem with, you know, cars too, some cars are very low to the ground, especially some of the expensive cars. And, you know, be careful with speed bumps on, plus safety vehicles too, like fire trucks and ambulances, they have issues with speed bumps as well.
And another thing was brought up, put in a, uh, runabout.
Runabout.
That's a, that's, that, that can't happen, because we'd have to buy property that it costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars. So in a way, in the meantime, I'm gonna have the police set up the outbound traffic, uh, meter and we'll do that for thirty days, see what kind of data we get on that.
That makes sense, Don, at least we'll have some data to be able to reference and to talk about.
Okay, I guess that's all I have.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm next, and the salary schedule that I wanted to bring up is, I know when we did our budget, we had proposed, um, we had talked about budgeting for a five percent increase, um, for employees. But I, I was presented with, um, a five percent increase for all employees effective July first. I didn't think we agreed on doing that across the board right away, did we? I, I'm not sure we agreed to do that.
I don't think we voted on it, but I think that was the assumption.
Right, but is that what we all assumed?
That, that's what I assumed.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to say that, um, we are approving a five percent increase for all employees. That would also include part-time and our water superintendent.
Sure.
Right.
Okay, all right. Do we, I guess, do we want to vote, I guess we have to vote on that? Okay, so just vote to have those salary schedules, five percent increase, um, for all employees effective July first?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. That's been approved.
That's a, that's a good thing.
Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page, okay. Now we're going to start working on our long-range plan and, um, Don wasn't sure that I wanted to take this on, but I do. So what I'd like to do very quickly is go through the long-range plan from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two to see what we have and have not done, what's still relevant, um, and what, what needs to get carried forward or what needs to be reconsidered. Or cross off the list altogether. So going back to what was talked about in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen was to improve communications with village residents, including ETJ residents. And bullet points to that, was add more features to the website, the village website, and include links between the village website and other appropriate sites. Now, I don't know the, uh, legal aspects of, of having links on our website to other non-government websites, um, I don't think that's really appropriate. Um, so I, I don't think this is really something we want to do. As far as adding more features, I know we have added more features.
Yeah.
And I think we should continue to look at those options, and I believe it is on our list of, of.
It is.
First year.
We were talking about adding an area where they could put in.
Comments.
Comments, questions.
Right.
It's up there somewhere.
Yes, yeah, it's in our, it's in, it's in this data here.
Wait a minute, um, in Forest Hill, okay. Questions for council. This, right here, website, questions for council button.
Right, the questions for council, right, instead of, you know. Supporting a concern.
We, we did, we did summarize all this and it is on a document.
Right, as far as our priorities, right.
And that, for example, that one right there, we were just talking about.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose stuff that we should have done.
Should we put this up here?
Well, it's gonna be, I think we are gonna put this, so that's gonna get there automatically, so that's.
Right, then you don't need this.
Right, review and update village personnel.
I, I think it would be helpful if that's something.
You want to put that on there?
I'm thinking, because we're, we, we called it out, and well, somebody called it out as priority one.
Okay.
I don't recall that being.
Okay, you know what, let's put it up here and, and let's assign someone. They, action plan, and, and assign it to someone.
Well, don't we want to look and then maybe prioritize those, let's see?
Or put them, at least group them into.
Okay, so the website, questions for council and what is?
Yes, yes. Or, yeah, you, yeah, user-friendly options. Improvements. So website questions and improvements. And that should be an ongoing thing.
Right.
That should always be on the list.
And I think we're always doing that.
Right.
Well, I would, I, I know we're gonna probably talk about these later, but I have some notes in the margin regarding that. Who, who maintains this page? Uh, it should be easy to do, but who is in charge of making?
We have a contractor that owns that page and the, and does all the work. It's a government, it is a government website, yes.
Good.
So is this more of a administrative?
Yes, yes. Um, review and update village personnel and pay policies. I think we always have to be looking at, um, we do have job descriptions for the police department, and we need to do job descriptions for administration, so admin.
So basically, because I've got one for Jesse, so we, we need one for Sharon and we need one for Lisa.
Right, and we'll need one for the additional job that we're also, um, looking for, the administrative assistant as well.
Okay, are, are we actively going to do that this year?
It was, it was budgeted, so yes.
Well, okay, wait, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about employing somebody and you're talking about doing the job description.
Well, it's both, I think we can't employ someone if we don't have a job description.
I would tend to agree, but.
Yeah.
Admin assistant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, this, and this is, it says, review subdivision and PUD provisions of Foxfire Village ordinance zoning. I don't think that's really applicable anymore, um, and why we have to review the provisions, I mean, we're.
No, we're, we're, we're gonna get the, review it automatically now anyway.
Right.
So they just take that out.
That's not an issue.
Some notes for me, because I'm not.
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, Mary, you, I don't know if you came in late, this was based, what she's pulling this from was from the long-range plan.
The original.
To a two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen, that was a, an item on there.
What was, say it again.
Review subdivision and PUD provisions of Foxfire Village.
Mick already, Mick totally went through the subdivision and the PUD provisions, I mean.
It's, PUD is a PUD, it can be anything, right, so that's.
I don't agree that it can be anything, but there's really nothing, there's nothing really to review.
Right.
Like a scratch.
Right, so we can scratch it out.
So that's done.
Scratch and move.
Um, continue to seek new water and well sites.
Yeah, we don't have to do that all the time, you know.
Consider the creation of a.
Sorry, I, I just want to also say that, and this has been a continuing thing, because it was also, also marked very important for this next, the next one as well.
Well, and we don't ever want to not look for well sites, that should be, that's a standard. It should be a standard part of someone's job is to always be on our radar.
And I'm, yeah, I don't know that necessarily needs to go on all the time, because we should be doing it every.
It should be part of what we do, right, yeah. Now, it's had on here a recreation committee to devise plans to make recommendations. Now, the thing with a recreation committee, I think we have trouble getting committees together in the first place and volunteer participation. I think people should feel comfortable coming to the council with recommendations. I don't know if we need to have a committee on recreations.
And I would definitely agree, we can't, we cannot get a committee now that is important as.
The appearance committee.
The appearance committee, which is, I, we're gonna talk about it, I'm sure, but it's like our number one, I think. We need to really be focusing on that, we can't get people for that.
Right.
I got one guy that volunteered.
Well, okay, good.
I mean, honestly, I was talking to him and he said I, I would be more than happy to be on an appearance committee.
Oh, well, that's good.
Yeah, I'm like, okay, now, now we need like five more.
Yeah, now we need a couple more people.
You can put the, print the app out off the website that's there.
The, uh, but I will say that.
The app is for them being on the committee, you can print that app out, just check off he wants to be on the appearance committee.
Okay, but that's one person.
Well, yeah, but I'm trying to get two or three too.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got one.
I think that'll come up on one of our things, and I agree, this probably should be an action item. I would say that the recreation committee was not something that was even part of the following year's long-range plan.
But isn't the recreation committee, and I'm looking at like the FPOA, they're, they're part of, wouldn't they be part of this discussion?
What I'm thinking of are the people that came to the council and said, we, we would really like you to do something about a pickleball court. So they came to the council with a recommendation, or the people that wanted new play, we really need new playground equipment, you know, I think.
More so than, okay.
More so than a constant committee, um, I think people coming to us, because again, we're a community of fifteen hundred people.
Right.
You know, um, right.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Okay, um, okay, the next thing was develop a long-term plan for the pool and the pool house, that's, that's.
That's fine, well, uh, sorry.
Yes?
Okay, so, uh.
Go ahead.
I'm, this is our work session, so we can just.
Yes, absolutely.
Climb on, right?
No, you don't have to raise your hand.
So a couple of things I want to point out, that in terms of what I've been seeing over the last, this plan and plus the new one, they, the people that responded said the pool is very important to the, to, to this, to this community. However, we, we know, as our, as a council.
Yep.
As this council, we now know that that is a very difficult, uh, resource for us. It's old, it's costing the money, it's costing the village a lot of money. We, we most recently found other issues with the pool, and I think we're, we're coming to the point where we have a decision to make about the pool.
Well, that's, that's.
Right there.
We've got pool, pool future, I think that the, the pool future is going to be, I, I don't think we need to bring this forward, but we need to have.
Well, I'm talking about a long-term plan for the pool, we don't have a long-term plan.
I don't think we can have a long-term.
Well, I think, well, I, I would argue that we do need to have a long-range, long-term plan, because we clearly know that that pool needs, it, it, it's in disrepair, it's costing us money.
Stop right there, it, it's really not in disrepair.
It's leaking, it's, okay, it's leaking and we know it's.
Disrepair means it needs a lot of work.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we don't know.
I don't mean.
What it needs at this point.
We do, because we have the health department come in and look at that pool very closely every year.
Structure.
Correct.
The structure of that pool is unsound.
That's not, that is the structure, I don't think what you're trying to imply, I mean.
I'm not implying anything that, except that we need a long-term, we need a long-range plan to deal with this. If, if we're gonna get a new, if we have to get a new pool, the, the, the residents of this town are, have to say, this is important enough that I'm willing to pay for that. We are at the end of life, we have, we're beyond the end of life.
No, we're way past the end of life.
That's why we have pool future as an important, as an important item.
So.
That's probably not even in a long-range plan, that's in a current plan, yeah.
Okay, well, all right.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, and here's the thing.
As long as we have that upfront, that we need to make a decision before next year, I think, we're gonna need to have some.
Well, we were talking about before this, but you know, I think what we need to do is get a referendum in the ballot.
Yep.
And the residents about the pool, explaining beforehand what it costs a year, what happens if we have to replace the pool, how much it's gonna cost to replace the pool, and give them an idea what it's gonna cost them per valuation of our house, what they're gonna have to pay for that pool.
See, right now, the, the standard for a cement pool, which is what we have, is approximately thirty, forty years on the, on the high end. Our pool was built in the seventies, so we're way past the time on this pool. We've already identified that we do have issues with it, again, with a leak somewhere. I've contacted pool equi, uh, locators, um, I don't know if they missed it, thinking it was the expansion joint? I don't know, I'm gonna have to have them come out again.
Have you spoken with them?
Uh, I, I had a lead message.
Okay, so you haven't heard back from them yet?
No, but I, you know, we have to decide, we're gonna have to probably have them come out again.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a long-range plan issue, I think it's a current issue.
I do too.
So I think we should just.
Skip that for now.
We should skip it for now and.
There's too many variables with that pool right now.
Now, okay, so that's, that's the pool, the, the pool is not a long-range, it, it is on the long range, but I think the problems or the issues with the pool need to be addressed currently.
Okay, I'll give you that.
And then, yeah.
We need to figure out if we're gonna get a new pool, how we're gonna do that.
Right, well, let me ask, let's go back to Don, you know, we talked about it, putting it on as a referendum, uh, because we have a voting here, and it could be put out there.
It could, we'll just have to.
Well, I just don't know that, we need to see what the technical aspects of doing that are.
Okay.
Having a referendum on the ballot, I don't know what the rules are.
I already spoke to Lisa about it, I don't know if she's checking into it, but, you know, do, do we decide to put it on or not?
Well, we have to be very, I think, I would recommend, I, first of all.
Go ahead.
I agree, uh, something has to be done, and I would say this might be a special session dedicated. If we're gonna talk referendum, we, we better have our ducks together.
Oh, definitely, oh, yeah.
Because we're clearly asking, we will be asking the village residents to vote, do I want this or I don't want this?
Right.
And we need to really, I think, come together and.
We're gonna have to show the cost of placing it.
It's more than for us to discuss here.
Well, yeah, right, we'd have to get the ducks in, in a row.
But I think it, it, I, in my opinion, it's a high enough priority that we should do something pretty, if, if we're gonna try to get it on.
Way to jump out.
As you're recommending, to get it on the, the referendum, to get it.
Yes, stand it out.
How much week time do we need?
Exactly, that's what.
That's a huge project.
Holy moly.
And not only that, I think what you have to remember too is, is that it's a very small percentage of the population that vote.
Right, that's the other.
It's a very small percentage, just thought I'd throw that out there.
That is a good point.
So is a public hearing a better place to, you know, have that, and have a couple of public hearings?
Well, maybe so, maybe, I don't want to discount that for sure, but I, I, the only thing I can, get concerned about in a public hearings is we have a small, maybe vocal group that comes in one way or the other. Unless we give the residents the opportunity all to be able to check, I want it or I don't, I would feel more comfortable that way.
And the other thing too is if you put it on a referendum and it passes, you have to do it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we.
Do, you know, is that something that, you know?
Well.
It's, it's, and it would be a significant.
You're gonna get the cost.
Yeah, in between everything else I'm doing, yeah, I'll get that done.
I mean, cost of life.
Just an estimate.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be a way that if, we, we could probably get some costs, but we've got to, I think we have to really research what a referendum would entail and how. All right, the information that you're giving has got to be accurate.
Is if it's on the referendum and they say, keep the pool, then we're obligated, if that. If that pool dies to replace it.
Yes.
Then I don't want it on the referendum.
Right, okay, let's, let's don't make any decisions right. I think we all agree that this is a high priority.
It is, and it's important.
And a referendum can be worded however we want it to be worded.
No.
Yeah, no, but you're gonna ask them to.
The referendum's binding.
I, no, I'm not saying that, Mary, but I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that we need to be very deliberate about our language on the referendum, so that we don't get painted into a corner, is all I'm saying.
I don't think there's any way you can't get painted into a corner, because you can't.
Well, a referendum more as a question mark, not as a do or don't, as a question. Are you, would you be for the pool or against the pool as a question here?
But then we go back to Gary's argument and, and Janice's, you know, we have, let's just say fifteen hundred people. You have two hundred people that vote.
Yeah.
And are those people going to be the determining factor in terms of the pool?
I would rather do a survey, yes, a mailed-out survey to the constituents.
Yeah, I, I don't want two hundred people making the decision regarding that pool and the expense of that pool.
Okay, I, I don't agree, but I'd like to, I'd like to put this at a later time that we talk more deeply about it, because I don't want to get caught up in the weed, but I think everybody here agrees, Jan, that is a big deal that we gotta deal with.
Yeah.
Well, I totally agree.
Okay, next item.
I live it.
Next item. So it's, this is not going away and it's gotta be on.
So do we wanna?
No, we don't, it's not on the long range. It doesn't belong on the long-range plan yet, because we don't know what we're gonna do. Once we, it's, it's something we need to figure out now, not long range. Whatever our future is, will be on the long-range plan, but.
Okay, so no pool?
No, not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Okay, continue. Now, this, it says, continue the street repainting program and identify drainage problems within the village. This is something that, that I think, and we've talked about it in the past, but we really need to hire that consulting firm, and I don't have the name right in front of me, to help us with drainage issues. And especially if we are repainting a street. It's, it's, yeah.
I know, I know we talked about.
It's the gills right here.
Okay. Well, yeah, 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 yeah.
So again, I don't think that's a, it probably belongs on the long-range plan, but we need to do something now.
It should be now.
Right, it should be now.
Why not?
I say yes, and then let's vote, let's put it in our priority, because we, it is gonna be long, ongoing.
Well, actually, the long, year one of the long-range plan is twenty twenty-three.
About to one.
Right? Which is now, so yes. So you know what? Put Pool Future on there. When you think about it.
Yep.
We have Pool Future and we've got road, road drainage.
Drainage plan.
Drainage plan.
Okay. Okay, public safety was the next item on the original list, and is its enhanced community policing, and we've done that. We, we have enhanced it. I mean, this is from two thousand and eighteen, so we accomplished that. Whether we do more or not, or whether it ends up on the next one. Seek public safety grants, they do that. Develop police officer career progression policies, we've got that in the job descriptions.
Yep.
Doesn't call, I'm sorry, so Don, it talks about what, what, as a patrolman, what do I need to do to become a lieutenant? Does, does, are we talking about that kind of job progression? Because I didn't see that on.
It doesn't show any progression as far as these.
We really are structured in that way, because we don't have, I don't think we, we don't have five employees, you know?
So we don't need a progression plan.
We don't have five employees, yeah. I don't think.
Nobody's gonna get a lieutenant.
Well, I can say if we don't want it, then the.
And, and let me ask another question. If there was a motion such as that, wouldn't that be voted on by the council?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be up to, like, the chief to make that appointment.
So it's not something that will be on our long-range plan? Okay, good.
Um, now, finance and tax, they had seek ways to improve citizen participation and knowledge of the village budget. I think, I think we do a lot of talking about the budget for weeks and months in every meeting.
Yes, how many meetings do we have about the budget throughout the year?
It's, it's probably, we start in March.
Right.
Talking about the budget. We get feedback from people. We, yeah.
We're doing it.
You know, our last budget, I added some charts and graphs that maybe make it a little bit easier, so I think we're doing that.
Yeah.
Future development. And again, this is a repeating theme. It's a developing plan to better market Foxfire Village to potential residents and business owners.
Yeah, let's take that. Well, and I think many years ago, yes.
Well, I do wanna throw, throw in that we did ask the question about the, the, this area, the business district area, and how important it is for that, for us to be considerate of what do we wanna put in that area.
Yes.
And, and, and they put that in with marketing of the village. I don't, I don't know that that's something that we wanna not have on the plan. We should be looking at that, right, all the time?
Business, I think, business, making people aware of the businesses we would like in the village is, is always, like, like an economic development type thing.
Right, and promoting those.
Would be something that we could do, but as far as having a big plan. See, and number one, we don't, we don't own any of the property.
Right.
It's up to the person that owns it to figure out.
Yeah, and we'd be sitting down with that person and saying, you know, what are your plans?
That is like the option.
What are your plans and when do you plan to do it?
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
It's up to that person to figure out his business plan, to figure out when he wants to develop that property and when he has interest in developing that property.
And ask him what type of businesses he's considering.
Yeah. And, and, and again, it's not like we have a plan to, you know, give tax abatements or anything like that to attract business. I mean, we just don't have the tax base to do things like that.
But then, should we be, should we be marketing that? And if not, then that's fine. I'm just saying.
I don't think we should, because we can't, no.
So I'm gonna be straight away on that.
Because we're not gonna build the buildings.
Well, we keep asking our residents if that's important to them, and if it's not important, then we'll take it out the survey.
Thing is, is that.
But we do ask them about it in our questions, and they say it's important.
But see, there were questions on there, and I probably have many times.
I did too.
Then I kept saying, I don't understand why this question is on here.
Because it's, we can't do anything about it, so it's, it's. It's a lose-lose proposition. You're asking people to comment on something that we have no control over.
Right.
Or little control over. We can, we can talk to the developer or the owner of the property.
Right.
But other than that.
But other, I mean, if we can, I mean, there are things that we said that they can't have as a business.
Right, that would be the only discussion is, is if, if they wanted to bring something into the town that we did not allow.
That we do not allow, right, that's the only really input we would have, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that.
Well, I guess the, the, I'm sorry, no, I mean, keep touching, I'm just a touchy guy.
I'm not, I'm not offended yet.
Okay.
It's when you get really heated.
Well, I, so, so, right, so for, and, and I, I'd say that we don't want this on our surveys anymore.
No, we don't.
Right, okay.
So maybe cross that one off.
Okay, so future development, that was one thing. Now, improve the look and appeal of the village website. We've been working on that.
Yes, we have.
We do that. Um, consider a village Facebook page. We have been, we have been told by our legal counsel that that is not what we, we cannot do. Seek ways to promote Foxfire with local real estate agents. That's not something, we just don't, you know, there's enough attraction to Foxfire.
Yeah.
We don't need to do that.
Keep under the radar at this point.
Right. Seek ways to maintain a variety of homes. That's people's, that's not, that's not ours. Develop and adopt plans for Woodwoodland Circle, not applicable. Consider a village business district and any, consider the village business district and any changes to zoning in conjunction with marketing efforts. That's not.
That's all, well, and again, this is what, this is what.
This is not applicable.
Marketing our village, as in putting something there in our village.
Right.
So that comes off?
Yeah, we're, so we're just going through saying, what plan, what do we want to carry forward from our old plan to the new?
Okay.
Town governance, okay, in nineteen and twenty, again, there was communication with the village residents.
We did that.
Evaluate effectiveness of general code and zoning code enforcement within the village and the ETJ. I do think that general of, or enforcement of zoning and enforcement of ordinances needs to be on the list, because that needs to be an ongoing, constant, long-range.
And a priority.
Right.
And a priority.
Okay, so should I have to start that one?
Code enforcement?
Yes, and zoning.
General code and zoning code enforcement.
Right.
Now, the police, this is the general code. We don't have anybody to do the zoning code except Lisa.
Right, or complaints, you know, complaints of, citizens' complaints.
And I, and I would like to review what the, what the process is for general code enforcement. I'd like to.
I gave you, I gave you a list of what the police.
I know that, but I'd like for the chief to say, how does he implement that? I mean, what is, what is his procedure for doing that? Is it just drive around and walk?
Neighbor's got a, complains about a parking dog, he goes out and takes care of that.
Okay, so garbage cans, trailers, miscellaneous. So let's, we wait for a complaint and then respond?
Well, he, if he spots, they, they all import, so they, as they drive around.
Okay.
Hard parking cul-de-sacs, noisy mufflers.
Right.
Well, and, you know, the thing on here is, is that, and this is what was on the long-range plan in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, is they wanted to strengthen enforcement. Second item on here was a part-time code enforcement officer.
That's what we're gonna have to do, because we don't have one.
Well, we do, we do. That's my, that's my, Derek.
A part-time officer, Derek.
He only does general code and not zoning.
No, this is, this is.
We understand that. It says zoning.
This is code, general code.
Yeah, that's, that's, he does it.
Right.
He's, uh.
You got, you're talking two different things there.
No, zoning, they don't do zoning.
No, they don't.
They're not supposed to do zoning.
No, they're not, no.
No.
But that's what we're talking about.
Gary.
We're, we're in agreement. No, Gary's talking about ordinances as well.
Right.
Like, because zoning is based on making sure building is done and making sure building.
We don't have anybody to enforce zoning except Lisa.
Right, right.
And that's the problem we got.
No, that's not the only one though, Don. I would argue that we still have a, again, remember when we looked at his job description? And, and it was the, out of, out of the fifty things he had to do, that was number fifty.
Yeah, it was.
And I'm, and I'm proposing to you that with all of the new building that we've got going on here, all of the things that are happening in these backyards and front yards and decks going on, we have no, we, we're not even close to it.
That's.
I'm talking of all of it together.
Well, have you seen, have you seen the police tally for the year and how many tickets had written as far as the police, they've written on the general code? It's been numerous ones, it's in the hundreds.
I, I don't mean to argue with you, but that.
I'm not arguing, I'm just telling you.
I'm, I'm just saying that I believe that we need to get our arms around it. I don't feel like we have a good.
There's two different issues. There's two different issues.
Exactly.
There's ordinance enforcement, and that's, and zoning, and zoning is a, is a, is a function of inspection.
Right.
And ordinances are not, ordinances are more if you can see something that's in violation, but every, every, anytime someone has a permit, it should be inspected.
Yeah.
At the completion of that.
I agree.
Now, whether we hire someone to do that, we have a person in the office that does it, or we hire an outside contractor to do that stuff, but it should be done. Okay, so let me.
We all agree.
We agree, we have two issues that need to be addressed.
Didn't you say that the water guy would be interested in doing that?
We, we have talked about it as a potential add-on, but until I know what we're talking about here, until we get our arms around it, there's no way.
Well, I, I spoke to someone, because really regarding the zoning issues, not code, zoning. They get a permit, they want to build a shed. There is someone I spoke to, and he would be willing to do it on a per basis.
So a contractor basis.
Yeah, so we need you, this guy's building a shed. We don't know when, it could be a year from now, but this is gonna be on your list to check it out, when it, it's going up and when it's done.
So put general.
And we pay them per job.
I agree. Put zoning inspection on there as well.
And, I mean, we already have someone that will do it.
Right. Because again, we don't have extra employees. We have employees that are already doing two and three, what two people would do in a normal town.
Right.
It's, and yes, we're small.
Right.
So it's not that it's impossible.
But this is not a full-time thing. This is a per-job inspection.
Right.
We're gonna have to add to the permits, so like, let's say they get a storage shed, that's fifty-dollar permit. Now, if we got a guy that goes out and inspects that, and they charge us seventy-five, a hundred dollars to do it.
Well, we'll do it.
So we gotta jack it up the.
Well, that we could, go ahead.
We're not gonna solve it today. I agree, this is, I think we all agree this is a prior.
That's why it's on the list.
Yeah.
No, absolutely.
For the first year.
So, but yes, you're absolutely right. We should include it, whether it's fifty dollars or, you know.
Whatever it is, just to cover it.
Seventy-five dollars, and I haven't.
All that should be looked at.
Yeah.
When we tackle it.
All right. Okay, again, long-term water requirements and availability, future wells connecting to an alternate water source. Now, connectivity to an alternate water source, we have a plan to do that if we ever want to go down that road. You've got it, you know what the, what the, what the process is.
Correct.
We know what the costs are, what the benefits are, and what the downside of it is. So we've got that.
Yes, we do.
And future wells are always on the, that's a, that's our, and water line maintenance and replacement, we've got a, we've got a reserves started for that.
Yeah, and remember, at this time, two thousand and nineteen, we did not have anybody to do this. But we do now, and that's, and we're doing that as we speak.
Nor did we have a reserve set up to do, to do replacements and all of that.
Correct.
Okay, and this is another, multi-year plan to improve curb appeal of the village, common areas. I, I think we always need to work on that, and I think we need to add it to the, the current first year. I mean, what are we doing? We mow.
Appearance committee.
Yeah.
We, that is so.
We do need.
We need it. We gotta have something.
Okay.
So can we put that one?
Yeah.
But can we just put Appearance Committee? Because that's, that's gonna be the one that's gonna do it.
And then you need to review what they're allowed to do.
Yes, of course.
Out of the D O.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Well, and then that's a big problem too, because the two main roads are state roads. Right, and other than that, you, we can't do anything on state roads. It's up to the state, just like the sides of our roads are pretty.
Well, we reached out to DOT about doing something with the side and, no.
Well, maybe we need to talk to our representatives about that, maybe like.
McGinnis?
McGinnis or Jackson.
Jackson.
Or well.
But we have a lot of areas where this would be important, is important, I think.
Okay. Well, there again, I think it's also up to homeowners.
Yep.
I mean, because the village, the village is not responsible for every street corner and people's personal property.
Correct.
I think people's personal property, people need to have that.
Pride.
That pride of making their.
There are things in our codes, our ordinances regarding people's properties.
Yeah.
The problem, and it's not a problem, the, the issue I have with the common areas, okay, and, and I'm gonna use the area leaning into the golf course. That was done by the Appearance Committee. That was all volunteers, et cetera. So there was no cost to the village at that point. Guess what? No, no committee. It now became a cost to the village. So I have to pay to have that taken care of. I have to pay to have flowers put in there, and I'm not saying I don't like to do it, but it is an additional cost. If we lose that Appearance Committee, it is now the village's responsibility to continue the upkeep.
I, I, you might, it should not be the Appearance Committee. This, this says Appearance Committee, not volunteer as in plant flowers.
No, 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 we had, we used to have a garden, a garden.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, we're way, I think we're way beyond that now.
Well, I think, I think too, I think what, what Janet's trying to say is, is that we can't, um, we can't allow, we can't allow volunteers to do improvements and say, oh, it'd be. and say, oh, it'd be no cost because it's a volunteer thing. Because when the volunteers go away.
That's what I'm saying.
When the volunteers go away, it becomes a legacy cost.
We inherit.
Right.
Everything that you've done is something we've had to inherit. And you, bless your heart, have done the best job anybody could have expected with what you got. You need more and you need more money to do it. It's just.
Well, that's the whole point, is that.
We never budgeted for that.
We don't budget, we don't budget a lot of money. And, and we were, we're already spending a lot of money on roadside maintenance and mowing and all of that stuff.
And the more we open up, and I'm gonna use Woodland Circle as the example, all of that back area in Woodland Circle now has to be maintained, which was never being maintained, obviously, because there were no homes. So now I have that whole area back there for road, you know, in terms of keeping the roads clean. So that's an added expense.
Yeah.
Every year. And I mean, we got lucky with our, our maintenance guy. We got a very good rate from him. But, you know, I'm looking at one company over close to $200,000.
Why are we, why are we mowing people's personal property?
We're not. We're not. We're doing the con, along the, like the easement area.
Yeah, but it's, it's their yard, so they only mow up to 20 feet before the.
What I'm saying is like, if there is, here's your road and there's sand or whatever on the road, pine straw, we clean that. The village pays, they have that cleaned up. Now, if some guy has his lawn, which is his, and it's not pine straw, the homeowner has to do that. But alongside Hoffman and Richmond, alongside the roads, he does that.
Yeah, I think she was asking about what did, what happened in Woodland Circle.
Oh, no, I'm just saying with Woodland Circle, there's the sand, the pine straw and all of that area that has to be maintained. That was never being maintained before.
What pine straw?
That's on the road.
Blows in there.
Oh, you say you take it off the, okay.
Yeah, he blows it off the road.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, it's, it's important to all of us and I believe our residents that we have a community that looks nice. And we've, I think through the appearance committee and the money that you don't have that we need for things like flowers and for general making it look like a presentable village that we're proud to be.
We could even do like the lamp posts with, not lamp posts, but posts with hanging baskets. I mean, if we wanted to really make things look good. And watery.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
Well, the fire department could water them.
Oh, sure. Oh, got that, Don?
They'll water them without five hundred pounds of pressure.
Well, I appreciate what she said.
No, but I'm saying those are things.
This is a matter of making our community look nice.
I think you should just keep doing the plannings and make it look nice. It costs its money. It's gonna cost its money.
Yeah.
It's gonna make everybody feel better about the village.
Yeah, unfortunately, I could charge extra for all that.
Yeah, but when you drive in, but when you drive in, it looks nice.
When you drive in, there should be flowers. It should be pretty. It's not.
And I'm not complaining. What I wanna say is keep that in mind that there is an additional cost.
Well, we know that, of course.
Oh, definitely.
And I think what I'm hearing is what we're willing to pay to have it look nice.
If we need, you know, if we need to get more money in those areas.
I'm looking at my budget, okay?
So, and again, I've said this a million times and I, and I'm gonna say it again on camera, but the fact is, is that when you, if you look critically from our roadways into our village, and I'm talking about not only our stuff, because we have responsibility to,
Yep.
but also the businesses that are, that are facing those roadways, we need to be able, and I think this committee can help us, help nudge businesses to be able to conform. But clearly, if we're struggling to make it look nice, then it's hard to ask them to do it too. But I think a two-pronged effort there would be a goal a long way.
Yeah.
Was that Delker?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think anyone's disagreeing.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Because we spend money on things that we don't always agree on, so I think we can spend money on stuff we do agree on. Okay, police department renovation, that was done. Public safety, evaluate progress on community policing. I think our police force does a great job.
They do.
I don't.
There's always a couple that disagree. That's the way it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how they can, especially when the chief lists out all those things that they do.
Holy smokes. Those are always.
Yeah, I can't remember. Is that, that is going on the website, right?
Yes. Okay, so that's, I think our police department has been doing a great job.
What page are we on?
We're on, we're going into year 2021, 2022.
Okay.
Okay. Town governance, communication plans with the village. Strengthen relationship and coordination with Foxfire-related entities like the golf course, the FPOA and the Women's Association. Now, I don't, I was gonna say, that's gone. I think they're the ones who did the flowers, by the way.
Yes.
Um, the FPOA, I think we do have communications.
Yes, we do.
And I, same, you were the liaison, are you with Brown Golf?
I am.
So those things are set up.
I'd really like to do a better job and I really wanna understand what the expectations are as we talk to, so if I have a conversation with, with the GM, what are our expectations for that business? And should it not be the same for the store, right?
Yeah.
And, and I, and I, I'm, I'm, I welcome the opportunity, but I'd really like to understand from the council what our expectations are as, as we look at those businesses, Brown Golf, to talk about the golf course in that case, and should we add our other business on there as well?
Well, I think you should.
Should there be a liaison to talk with them?
With commercial, with commercial entities in general, I think. And like with the golf, with the golf course, I think there were a lot of issues and I don't know if they've all been addressed, but they've had like sand piles hanging around.
I think those are going where?
Yeah, they're gone, but they're.
They've got brush piles that they were working on, but are they, I don't know where they are in the process of that.
They've got the brush about 90% gone.
So they're, you know, I think the things are better.
They're working on it.
Those are the things I think that we wanna, you know, make sure they know we noticed, you know?
When's the building gonna be done? The maintenance building?
They're working on the doors. Waiting on opening doors.
That'll take about six months.
Well, they probably should have been ordered eight months ago.
Yeah, okay. So I think, I think liaison with commercial entities is something that we do need to make sure we do and continue to do.
And I'm thinking that should be streets and parks, no, 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 water, let me finish. You know, so streets and parks, water department, police, there should be, one of the council persons, I think, should have just a business liaison or something like that. And I'm just throwing that out for discussion, but it seems like we should put that on to the responsibility of a council person to report to the council in terms of the business liaison. Does that sound feasible to maybe to talk about?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
To add to a.
Why don't we put that on the list of, of a business liaison, a council person who is responsible as a business contact? Okay. Because we don't have one, really. I mean.
Well, we got Gary doing Brown Golf.
Right.
So we've implemented that.
Yeah, so naturally it would be the water department. The council person who has the water department. And I would take it up. I swear I would.
For what?
I would take.
Oh, oh, you mean like the other business?
I would be happy to obligate disposition to add that if you guys agree.
Do not give it to me because I will not take it.
You gotta, Gary.
Well, I think, I don't know if we need to load on that or not. I don't know how that works as far as what the council is responsible for. Is that something?
I don't think so. Well, we're just putting it on the long range plan. Okay. Curb appeal again and street drainage plan, we, that's on the list.
So two different things almost, right? So we've got the street drainage plan for sure.
And the curb appeal.
And we've been talking a lot about curb appeal.
Well, that's the appearance committee.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Where are we?
Well, improvements in the village green. You've already done most of this stuff. The community center, that came popping up.
Yeah, the community center has been something on the list for a very long time and I think.
Not this year again, too.
I think, I mean, that, that is, that is something that I think we talk about. But I think what, what's kind of replacing the community center is more of, as we talked about in our last council meeting, police department, I mean, we're talking about two, three-year plan, five-year plan. They're gonna need more room. This city hall's gonna need more room. I think there's gonna be a need for, not really a community center, but a rethinking of the usage of, of this complex. And again, that had to do with a storm center kind of.
Yeah.
You know, so there's, I think that's more of an issue than a community center. I think we've got.
And that's definitely a long-range plan.
It is, it is.
But I think you're right to bring, instead of separate, just say village hall administrative center or something like that.
Yeah, and I thought it was on the list of.
It is, but I don't think we can use this meeting.
Emergency cell to city hall warming place generator, yeah.
Well, we're just consolidating them to one.
But that's not on, that's not on this plan.
We cannot use this room as a community center.
No.
No, no, we're talking, while you're in the restroom, we're talking about brand-new complex.
And you know, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, to be honest with you.
We're on a long range.
We're gonna have to have it.
We somewhere down the line, yes.
The department's growing.
And what we need to be doing is reserving for that future.
For that building.
And that, and it's gonna be significant. You're talking easily, I bet, a million dollars.
Right. The question is where?
I would say it would have to be in this area because we're gonna, I would think we would use.
I've got a lot down here.
I would think that we would use these buildings that are here and see if we could connect them and expand them through connecting them or building onto them.
At least for me.
Between the police department.
Yeah.
But this building.
I don't think it's a bad idea, especially since we are growing. We, we need an area for people to, you know, if they wanna come in and play cards or, or hold their own, their meetings or whatever. Where do they go right now? They could go to the park and sit on the pavilion, but other than that.
Well, they have the golf, the golf course.
But how many times, and again, I get it, they've been very receptive with allowing people to come in. The FPOA holds a lot of functions there.
They should, they should, and you know what? They could always charge if it becomes, you know,
Yeah.
an amount.
Right.
I don't think, again, I don't think, even though it would be a nice idea, I don't think it's necessarily our place as a community, as a village, to say, we need to build something so people can play cards. I mean, it's just not. But if we have the room, yes. We just don't have that luxury.
I agree. I think as we evaluate this potential complex, that, that would be part of it.
Right.
You know, would we need a room this big? Because, you know, could we expand out?
Well, I would say you could go on the outside of this, end of this building, there's a lot of room out there.
Yeah, and, and just expand it, right?
Right.
And that would be perfect.
Long range, go ahead.
But maybe we should put that down as something we budget for.
Well, it's, it's on the, I think we're talking about year one here.
Oh, yeah.
This is our year one.
But I think we should budget for it.
Well, we have land use plan, long-range plan, expand village office and PD.
There it is, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Where are we?
We're, I think now on 21, 22. Which is town governance.
Got it.
Determine the value of active participation by council members in state, regional and local government organizations. Actually, we've been doing a lot of that.
This year has been a watershed for that. I agree, you and Don, really, you and the mayor.
Yeah, we've done, we've done that and I think it's important to get used to doing that.
I agree.
Working with area town mayors and going to Raleigh and talking to these, face-to-face talking to these representatives.
Maybe that's something we could also capture for under, you know, the mayor and the, and the mayor pro town. Part of their job is to do this.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That way we can kind of codify it for future. Right, but now we put it down to the next mayor and the next mayor pro town, as we go through them, are obligated to continue that process.
Okay. Water, long-term water supply, we're doing that. Detail action plan milestones for village green spaces and walking trails. Well, we're doing that as a course of business. I mean, we're not even doing that as a.
No, it's being done.
Are we, are we, what is, they're talking like procurement of easements. Do we all have any plan for that, Billy?
No, no.
Okay, do we, do we need a plan for?
No, I don't think so.
For what? In what respect?
I don't know.
The only thing we would wanna do that on is private land that we wanna use. I, I don't think that's a good idea, to tell you the truth.
For a while, though.
I don't think it's a good idea.
The one in Pinehurst might be available.
Just move it. Progress with curb appeal, again, I think.
Talked about that, Don.
Yeah, we've done that.
Okay. Again, public safety, review manpower requirements of, oh, a reserve program, a public, for police department. We don't really have a reserve.
No.
Well, actually, we do have a reserve officer. Oh, I think we have two. I think we have two.
Richard and somebody else.
Yeah, which I didn't even know we had.
Yeah.
So that's working for.
They're on call if needed.
Financial plans to support decision, oh, water, long-term water source. We already, we already have that.
Implemented this year.
And green space and walking trails, again, I don't think it's, I don't think the village is in a position or is it their responsibility to acquire land for green space and walking trails. If someone wants to donate land for green space and walking trails, but we're just not in a position to be buying land for that car.
Well, here's, here's my comment regarding that. We own 50 acres on the west side. That's approximately how many acres are in our park. Our walking trails are two and a half miles.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If, honestly, I mean, we have a lot of land there that we could use.
Right, for a lot of different things.
That we own.
Yes, and I, I agree.
Yep.
It is totally underutilized as far as I'm concerned. And, yeah, and we could have someone come in and say, you can do this, you can do this, you can do this, and, and put in some of the things that we.
What about, what about development of, or future development for park?
The existing park.
Right, existing park for the west side.
I, I just, I'm sorry, I cannot justify having a 50-acre park and then opening another one.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
Because just to maintain this one is an expense and you'd have to buy property and you're not gonna buy a couple acres. You're gonna buy acres.
We all agree. We're with you.
Okay, so what am I writing again? I forgot.
Development plan for park?
Village green, right? Is that, do we call it the village green?
The village green.
That's all a park, isn't it?
Oh, is that what?
That includes, includes walking trails, I think, as well.
The village green includes the walking trails and everything.
Oh, okay, so it's called the village green.
Have you ever been there?
I've been there. I probably forgot what the signs say.
I've noticed more people. I usually go there, I usually go out there two or three times a week.
Do you?
Oh, yeah, and I've noticed a lot more people coming out.
Yeah, they are.
It's busy.
Yeah.
I mean, that's good.
Yeah. It is getting used.
Because you don't mind spending money on things that people use because that's what their tax dollars are going for. Woodland Circle property's gone. Community center, discussions on the community center, we've got that. Okay, all right, so that's what's left over and that's what's our year one plan. So let's spend, how late do you guys want to go?
Six.
Okay, so when we go to year two.
That's this one.
Yeah. Well, and we had, we had these priorities. Let's see if we have important areas to address if it's on our year one plan. Improve communication with residents.
Yep.
Increased administrative staffing.
Yep.
In my experience.
Okay. Yeah. Develop a five-year plan for repeding and correcting drainage issues.
I, I would just, I, I, I'm just wondering if the priorities might be goofed, but I think we all have those. We'll carry over to.
Water system sustainability, got that. Future of the village pool.
Got that.
Code compliance.
Got that.
Permitting process. Oh, permitting process. As far as inspection, that zoning inspection. That would be on the zoning inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the question was, what are we doing to ensure that everyone gets what they pay for?
Well, show your permit on your.
Um, no, I think.
No?
I think that the permitting process, which is what Gary was, is talking about, is that it's followed up with the inspection.
Okay, okay, got it.
I think, okay. Okay, I think.
We can't hear that. At all.
Which?
The one I just crossed out.
Oh.
Okay.
And we have code compliance on here.
Yes.
Okay. Because we made that.
Okay, so that was year one.
That, that's for this year, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because actually, we had year one on year two.
Okay, permitting, so we, every, oh, so permitting process, so we can check that off, because we've got it up here, right?
Yeah.
Or fees.
Yeah, reinforced inspections and the fees adequate. That'd all be part of the whole, that's really all part of the whole.
I'm gonna write fees, fees on here, too.
Okay. Okay, so we go to long-range plan, year two. So the emphasis on year two is to fully implement the marketing and communications plans that were developed in year one. We don't really have, we don't.
Okay, I got it.
So I did have a note on there, but my note is what plan?
Exactly.
So if there was a communication plan, I've never seen it. Or a marketing plan.
Well, we don't, we don't want a marketing, we're not in the business of marketing. We're in the business of running the town. And again, all of our, it would be different if we owned commercial property.
Agreed.
You know?
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Uh, I think for now, I'm not su, well, no, now we have to go to year two in our plan.
Well, then we start all over with our, don't we?
Well, okay, so what do we?
Well, I, yeah, I, I think what she's saying is, we need to take that and bring that in with this, right?
Right, so, so do we need all new sheets now?
No, I think what we need to do is cross off.
I got it.
What we go.
Just tell me what you want me to cross out.
Well, hey, I'll help, I'll help, because, I mean, let's go back to what we put down there.
Okay.
And then you can, like, we can go across there.
Questions and improvements.
Yeah, so basically, we're talking, this is the improving communications, right? So.
Yeah, that was, that was here.
Right there.
Okay, what else?
Uh, we talked about getting jobs, right? We need an administrative assistant.
Okay.
Administrative staff, you crossed that off.
I already did that, okay.
Administrative support, you might as well cross that off. It's up on the top, right there. Pool future, you can cross that off.
Drainage.
Where are we?
McGill.
Paving plan over here, number five.
Uh, do, okay.
No, we didn't do a paving, we didn't, we didn't get to paving plan.
No, we didn't, no, we talked about.
No, that's not on our this year plan. No.
I mean, I, I have the list of roads that we have to concentrate on. Go ahead, where are we?
Okay, uh.
Take it off? What am I taking off?
Improving dedications for residents, we covered it in show.
Yep.
Where are we?
The bottom, the bottom one.
Oh, you know what? Put the volunteer recognition, recognition effort.
Yeah.
And, and we really should do that.
Here, you can have it. Or whatever.
You know what? Let's plan something for the fall. Let's put an act, put that on as an action plan.
Is it volunteer recognition on a long-range plan?
No, that, we wanna do that this year, though, so that's why it's in green.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, let, let's plan something, whether it be at the, the park, at the park.
Village Green.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Then you can cross it out.
Okay, no.
So we got general, general code and.
I can take this off, right?
Well, that's.
No, we haven't, we haven't really put that on there yet.
Well, you can, you can, I mean, I'm, we're doing here.
You can cross out the add, add it to the budget amendment, because that's already, or the budget message, because we did, we did that. I did that, and I will do that.
Okay.
Okay, what else we got there?
Uh, the code enforcement, zoning inspections and fees.
That's up here somewhere.
Permitting, yeah.
Permitting.
Okay, we got it. So this one's done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so appearance.
So we did this, too, right? Well, Karen's.
Yes, yeah, that's off, that's on the.
Okay, and we, we. Leave that for a minute.
Good. Now we're looking for curb appeal, appearance committee, that kind of stuff. Maybe we had something on there.
No, we didn't have that, really. No, that wasn't on there.
Okay, so that one didn't make it, although, I wonder why it didn't. Well, you know, I think, I think it might have gone into the road enforcement and all that. Because we talked a lot about the fact that there were issues, but we just weren't taking care of it. Okay.
So, I don't, yeah, we never got the, oh, wait, we did this, this is on there.
Oh, we haven't got.
Job description's on there.
Yes, it's on there, yes, it is.
Yeah, job description, yeah.
Are we really looking at another card?
Not, not next year.
It'll be, that'll be, that's really always in the planning. That's not, so take it off, yeah.
All right, so what's next?
Uh, so development plan for the village green.
Oh, okay, that's heart repair, heart repairs?
Yep. Uh, yeah, I think, well, remember, I brought, that was me, I brought that up about the fascia boards needing to get.
Yeah.
And then, and then you talked about, we really should have a plan for that, as in, we should be doing that yearly, right?
Yep, yep.
Let's do a green. No, no, no.
Could we do it in this? Put it under there as a.
Well, no, that's different. I think the development has more to do with the development of the property.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay, so.
You can take, partial repair and take that off.
You know, and put council tables as a green.
I agree.
We'll do that this year, depending on, uh, council tables.
That's a, that's a long-range plan?
No, that's a green, that means this year.
Oh, gotcha.
Um, I, I'll have Lisa checking of the cost.
Wait, discussion, with the one you just turned away.
Discussion of revenue.
Oh, yeah, no. I checked it before I pulled it. Okay.
That's it, that's all we have.
Expand village office and PD, isn't it somewhere?
That's gonna be, no, that's only gonna be a long-range.
Okay, so that's not.
This is year one, basically.
Yeah, all right.
So this is.
So should we put an action plan in for year two or something?
This is, put, put twenty-twenty-three on that.
That's current.
Okay, now flip the page and put twenty-twenty-four.
Wait, are, are we done with the page?
Yeah, yeah, we're done with both of those.
Okay, so twenty-twenty-four. All right, so get a different color, Gary.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm back.
Oh, so I'm still stuck.
So on the long-range plan, on the.
Oh, wait, we're not done with all of these.
Well, that's because they're, I think they're.
Well, okay, so this is a long-range plan now.
Yes.
This is twenty-twenty-four, all right, that's where these are coming. Uh, I'm, I'll work on the food truck thing later. Um, in my spare time. Okay. Um, so we're kind of done with that one, right?
Code compliance, you can take that off, because we got that as part of the enforcement.
Where are we? We're not done with that.
The code compliance, we have, we have that.
The second, the second sheet, code compliance, you can cross that off.
We got that.
Okay.
Okay. So are we?
Move yard trees.
Year two, year three, year four?
Yeah, that's gonna be at least next year.
If not later.
If not later.
Okay.
Definitely the long-range plan, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, to, because it's gonna start then.
Okay.
So that's something that should get started.
Well, let's look at these slides that, that Don had prepared as far as from the long-range plan, year two goals.
All right, before we start doing that. You, you know, I, I do like this, and I don't know what it would take. I, I think there's some, we, we have to do something, but I do like the pay of the water bills and taxes via.
Where are you looking?
I'm on village governance.
Yeah.
Or am I ahead?
Oh, actually, you, you are ahead.
I'm sorry.
But that's okay. Um, again, implement and evaluate efforts for better communication with village residents. I think, I mean, it's, always should be on there.
Yeah.
So add village communication or council communication or village resident communication.
Yeah, and I think we, didn't we already?
Yeah, we already had it on one.
Yeah, but this is, so now we're talking, we're, we're gonna improve communications and we're gonna start add-ons now.
Well, it says.
So being able to fill, pay bills.
Well, wait a minute, let's, let's back up. Now, just because this is what was recommended doesn't mean that we have to agree to it. And that's what this is kind of, do we want to do this? So it has addability to video broadcast council meetings via the village website. This is a slippery slope.
Yep.
For a community of our size.
Yep.
It has a lot of, mm, a lot of things associated with it as far as storing the, the information, security of the information. Um, depending on where you do it, you have to have the ability to people have interactive live questions that you have to accept. It turns, and you need someone to administer it.
I need IT.
And, and more, and I just think that, this is just not, number one, we do not have to do it. Again, a community, and what I'm doing, just so you know, is, is that I am in the process of doing a cost-benefit analysis on this. What will this cost if we were to go down this route? And I don't think it should be on our long-range plan unless we know what the costs are.
Yep.
Wait till you get the numbers.
Right, and then if we get the numbers and understand the technical aspects of it and the, and what's needed to do it.
Our website right now wouldn't be able to hold it, hold all the information.
I don't know, I don't know enough about, but my questions were, who's administering? What do we have at our capabilities? Well, I don't know any of that, so.
Yeah, I, I just think that, I'm, I'm doing some research, well, I asked Lisa and Sharon, and as well as paying water bills and taxes via the website, I think that's a great idea. We're looking into that as well.
Oh, good.
As far as are there costs? Are there things associated with it? Um, security.
The security is the biggest.
There's security, you have to worry about, um, uh, hacking.
Yep.
Who's maintaining the, the information?
Yep.
Yeah.
And again, we're a small village, we are a small community. Um, what is the cost and is it worth it?
Well, I know Aberdeen, you have to, because when we lived there for a year.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I looked at.
Well, for water, I don't think you can pay your taxes online, but I think for water.
They knew it for water.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Aberdeen, he had to pay your, either mail it or pay a person.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in the county, you gotta mail it.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, again, it's, it's something that, um, I, and it depends how they do it. Are they doing it correctly? Just because they do it doesn't mean that they're not subject to.
The concern I would have would be the security.
Yeah.
And, and I'll tell you.
And the liability of getting hacked.
The, the thing is, is most, everybody in this village goes past this air, this building somewhere along the line.
Mm-hmm. Or they could do online banking.
Or they can mail it.
Yeah.
That's what I do online.
But anyway.
Okay.
I, I am, I think before we put this on a long-range plan, I would feel better about doing some cost-benefit on this, so I, I am doing this.
Okay, so we're not putting it up here?
Not yet.
Okay.
Evaluate effectiveness of general codes and zoning codes.
Well, we've already got.
Already talked about that.
I, I think we've done that.
Yeah.
And if we do, I still think have a challenge with enforcement.
Yep.
Within the village and in the ETJ, and that's something that should definitely be on the twenty-twenty-four long-range plan, is continuing to improve enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Code and zoning, both. Now, again, on this list, it's review and revise as necessary subdivision requirements. I don't understand.
I don't get why that's there.
Why that's there, do you understand why?
No.
Mick rewrote the, when we did the, he rewrote it, I don't.
It seems as though we, I mean, we have rules we have to follow with subdivisions.
Yeah, we do.
We, we approve subdivisions or we don't approve subdivisions.
It's gotta go through the process, there's, I mean, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, I think it's not, it's.
What are we taking off?
I think what happened, I, I wonder, just putting some context behind this, I'm wondering if, remember there was, we had a lot of interest generated as we were going through the Wendy Knoll stuff.
Wendy Ridge?
Sorry, Wendy Knoll, Wendy Ridge stuff, and I'm wondering if this might have been a catalyst, that might have been a catalyst for saying, hey, we got a problem here, we need to make sure we address it. But I think it had been addressed.
Well, and I think the big thing too, is, is that when we have projects like that, number one, they're, they're gonna be coming to the council, and I really do think that we should post, and I think that's on the list somewhere, post approved plans, once a plan is approved, or in the approval process, that we post them. Post them in this room, post them in the foyer of, you know, proposed proposals, or this, this is project has been approved, like, not for regular homes, but for subdivisions, like the, the, the building on the golf course. Know ahead of time, you know, have it posted so people know what's going on, um, in the commercial and in, other than single-family homes.
Okay, so commercial, posting?
I, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't that kinda fall under continue village communicate?
Yes, it would.
Continue enhancing village communications, and then as an example.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah.
So we're gonna say.
Posting projects.
Posting projects.
Development projects or something.
I just put it right underneath village communication, I wouldn't make, yeah, instead of making a new line item.
Well, I was just gonna do a little asterisk there. No, it's more, it's more up in the village communication.
Now, if it was me, I'd draw a big line in this.
So what, po, uh, posting what?
Posting plans of.
Projects.
Of non-residential proj, non-single, um, well.
Why wouldn't you just post them all?
No. Not single-family homes.
Not single-family. Well.
Well, I'd like to speak to them.
Post a subdivision, not like Wendy Ridge, though.
Well, a subdivision like that, yes, but not, but not your, one, one house at a time.
Yeah, then just put like as an exam, like as an, as an example, those are the things.
Right. But we, I, I know what that means, and when I type that up, I'll, I'll fix it up.
All right, fix it.
Um.
Where are we?
Seek ways to improve enforcement, it's the same thing, village, okay. Hire a village maintenance superintendent to address issues associated with ongoing needs to maintain appearance and care of village property.
You got one, and she does it for free.
You know, I think we're better off, um, we've got Jessie who helps us from time to time, we have contractors that we hire, I don't think this is something we should even be addressing, at this point.
Yeah, I think this came up during our conversations about volunteering, I think you, you had mentioned, I had mentioned about the patients, eh, Ryan will take care of it, you know, yeah, Don's gonna do it. And that's when I said, you know, we should not have to do that, we should have some way that we have somebody, a contractor, or a maintenance person that should be generally taking care of these things, I mean, maintenance are, you're saying there's not enough maintenance stuff for a full-time person?
No, there isn't, and, and really, okay, so now we've got the park, the pavilions, that's part of my responsibility, if I can, if I can get a volunteer to hire someone and get some quotes, which I've already got out there, um, looking for, for that kind of a project. And, and I think it's under each one of our respons, responsibilities, I don't think we need to hire somebody to do that.
Not an employee, and it says responsibilities to include pool maintenance, we have a pool maintenance person.
Which is much cheaper than hiring someone.
Yes.
To do the job, address drainage issues, we don't want a city employee addressing drainage issues, we want a, a certified contractor to do that.
But the context for that, I, because I do remember those conversations, was you, you had said that it would be helpful if we have somebody that could be identifying these things ahead of time.
Well, I think more so, not ahead of time, but when they come, the issues come up, like the one I discussed with you. I got one right now, I'm not going into it right now, and, and it really is not our issue, but I would rather have an engineer re, to come out and say.
McGill?
Yes, and say, look, this, this is, and it's not just, this to me was an easy look at and say, this isn't ours. But that's me saying that, and, you know, I can go back to all of, everything that we have from our attorneys, but I would rather have an engineer go, this is not a village issue, this is your neighbor across the street.
Right.
And if it's a neighbor across the street, it is not a village issue to correct that drainage issue.
That McGill.
Yeah, and I'd rather have someone that has the background to say, it's not the village.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Because that has more teeth to it.
And again, we are too small of a community to, to.
To hire someone to do that.
Okay, good.
Right, you know, repair, replace broken fencing, well, that's, that's been done, that's fixed.
And not only that, if it's on your property, we're not doing it.
Right, right.
Okay.
Grounds maintenance, we have a contractor for that, trash pickup, we are not gonna have.
No.
A trash company, you know, we've got, and that's just the thing, we are not here to duplicate with tax dollars what people can get.
On their own.
On their own, or through the county services.
Right.
You know, it can go.
And honestly, when it's included in your water bill in Aberdeen, if you don't want that trash pickup, you're paying for it. And you know what, it should be your choice to pay for it or not.
Right, right. So anyway, that's that, um, so I don't think we need to hire a village, or even think about hiring a village maintenance person. Village governance, um, evaluate the effectiveness of tax mill rate established in twenty twenty-three.
Well, you're gonna be doing that anyway.
That's just a part of the budget list.
Budget.
Okay. Village infrastructure, evaluate long-term water requirements and availability. I mean, that is an ongoing thing that we should always be saying, checking the box, right, so I guess, uh, long-term water requirements.
Well, yeah, well, it's every year, though.
Well, I don't know that I, I would need, yes, okay, so, so in twenty twenty-three, we did the evaluation. I'm, we have, what I was saying is, this is not, we don't do this every year.
Oh, you don't?
No, we shouldn't be doing it every year, it's the same, I gotta bring Moore County in to go through all, and instead of two point one million, instead of two point one million, it's two point three, two million. So we, we've come to the conclusion, it's gonna be Moore County, we know where they're at today, we know what it's gonna cost to bring it up today, maybe in five years, we should have that again.
Okay, so this is really a twenty twenty, um, five years?
Five, six, seven.
So, yeah, five, I, I would take it off.
Yeah, I'd say like five years is what I'm thinking. And if there's an emergency where we need to do something, we've already got Moore County.
So just take it off completely? I would put it in probably year, year five of this plan.
Yes, yes, so.
Develop comprehensive multi-year plan to improve curb appeal of village.
And they're done that.
Appears committee.
Yeah, we already got, got on that.
Yep.
Recreation committee, I don't understand the need for that, um. I, I really don't, I, I just think it's.
Can I say something about the, that came up when we still owned Woodland Circle, and there was some discussion about maybe turn that into like a disco, you know, stuff like that. I remember going through that with Mick, that's where that idea came from, and it was done before the, the last long-range plan, that's where, that's where the idea came from.
I just don't think, I mean, it, if we, if we agree on that, then we can just take it off, I mean, Don can argue with it, but. A multi-use path for Hoffman Road, not, not possible.
No, it's a state road.
A state, the state would have to do it.
Yeah, and, and that's, I, I had a question about that, but, you know, we have problems on Richmond as well, but there's nothing we, I was told there's nothing we can do about it.
We can't, state road.
The state would have to put in that path and maintain it, and.
And they're not gonna do it.
Right, I can tell you that right now. We can't even get them to, to give us, yeah, the science of, yeah, science of the road.
So unfortunately, I think that has to come off.
It does, I agree.
We have no control over that.
Right.
Yeah, except for, we can do things like increase awareness, the police are already out there, they're doing their thing, and is there anything more that we can do? I don't think so.
I think, like you said, keeping the speed limit at forty, which, you know.
Yeah.
Or below, right.
Okay.
Um, evaluate process identified in year one, oh, I'm sorry, progress identified in year one related to community policing.
Well, we took that off.
But, yeah, we're, we're done, we're, we're doing that.
Same thing with this one.
Excel of safety, we're already, we had a.
Assess responsiveness to calls and complaints, just as a question, does, do they keep track of how long it takes them to respond to a call? The police department?
Uh, I'll have to ask them, I'm sure they do.
I'm, I'm sure nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Has that information.
Nine-one-one does, but as far as a local call coming into the police station, I couldn't tell you.
I don't think they do, but I'll be honest with you, I, I place some calls, have people come, someone to the park, we're talking minutes that they were there, and it kinda depends on where they are.
Sure.
Yeah, if they're on the other side of Woodland.
But we're talking minutes.
Not sure.
They're, and, and my Ron's aunt has called, uh, this is when my cousin was still alive, numerous times for, you know, pickup, it fell over there. Again, minutes, their responsiveness is very quick.
Yeah, they're good.
So I don't, yeah, I mean, do they, uh, do we want them to even have to track that? No, I don't think so. Because I'll tell you what, if they didn't arrive in a timely manner to someone's home, we'd be hearing about it.
Oh, yeah.
Finances and taxes, uh, the finance and taxes, develop financial plans in support of programs approved by council.
I think we do that.
Don't we do that?
We do that every day.
We do that.
You do that, you help us do that.
Yeah.
Future development, review and revise as necessary the planned efforts to market the village as developer in year one. We already said that, that we're not doing that. Review village business district zoning, we've done that, and we're set on that.
We're done.
Unless something comes up.
Okay, so year three, should we go, go through three and be done?
We'll design, yeah.
Or do you wanna quit?
As well finish it, no, just stay.
Well, we got four and five years to go.
Yeah, we still have, no, let's, let's just stop.
Okay.
We only got to.
Got two down.
What we're doing this year and what we're doing, what we.
Think we're doing.
Think we wanna do next year, and see if this is, uh, so, at least prioritize what we're talking about.
So let's go back here real quick, we have two greens, um, we're already coming up to July, volunteer recognition, if we're gonna plan that.
That's gotta go on maybe the council, um, do, do we wanna do it in a council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, next council meeting.
Thank you. Um, I'd rather not have to take that, I, I've got a whole bunch of stuff coming up in July, and council tables, Lisa can do that.
Volunteer recognition.
Yeah, so let's at least get this on the calendar, say, in the fall.
And the tables is, did Lisa already do that?
No, not yet, I don't think, I think she was gonna look into the cost of it, you, you know what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we got that, let's just put this in, uh, in the back.
I'll, I'll just take all those sheets and bring them home, and.
You wanna just take the whole thing?
Yeah, I could just take the whole thing, sure. It's mine or yours, I think this is mine.
So, um, we're then gonna take this, share it with Don, right?
Yes.
The next thing we, I would say that we wanna do would be to prioritize these and then assign duties or, so as part of the action plan, what's the pri, what's our priority, and who do we want to work on?
So we do that at the next work session.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
That way we're clearly.
Well, don't forget, we're working on, on the, on the five-year plan, so.
So finish that and then prioritize.
I think, I think that's, because some of these repeat each year, you follow up on this, you follow up on that, and so it's like, who is going to be, or what department is going to be responsible for that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm assuming that's how this is gonna work.
I hope so.
Now, not done this before.
Well, you know, I, I, I have, and, and I think the thing that we all agree to is that.
This, this, the.
Wait a minute, hold on, hold on a second.
It does no good for us to do this without prioritizing, by assigning somebody to do it, we're just kicking it down the curve, this is how we do it.
I totally, I totally agree. It, it means it's on the chiefs, why would it be on the chiefs and not on the owners?
Okay, all right. Very good.
That should, that line should be on everybody's job description, no matter what.
Well, yes, we can do it all, yeah.
Right, I guess I'm gonna call this meeting to a close at six ten. Okay.